Good evening, welcome to the West Jordan Planning Commission meeting for December 1st, 2015. We do have all seven members of the commission present this evening. The first item on our agenda is the, our content calendar, which includes the minutes from our last meeting. Commissioner Pack.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I need to approve the minutes from November 18th, 2015, as contained in the staff packet.
Second.
Motion for Commissioner Pack, second by Commissioner Skoski. Any discussion into the motion? No, in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. First item on our agenda is a business item regarding deferment of improvements for 34 feet of pavement, driven better on 78 South. Boyer Company is the applicant. See the applicant presence? Would you like to come fill us in on where that stands?
Sure, I can, or Larry?
We'll make Larry go, too.
Great, Larry could probably do a better job than I can. We are currently constructing Loneview Phase Three. It's our last phase out of Loneview. I wish we had additional phases, but we do not. We ran into an issue with Rocky Mountain Power when we relocated the power lines on our frontage. There's one pole in the area that you see up there. We were unable to complete the road on account of not being able to move that pole. In order to move that pole, we would have to go to the adjacent property and reconfigure the lines on their property, which we do not own. The solution that we've come up with, and I think Larry and Todd can speak to this, is providing some funds to the city so that when that line is relocated to the east and that road comes in, there'll be adequate funds to complete the road section that is on our property. You know, aside from that, I don't know if there's much to add. Larry, did I miss anything?
Did you hear his name?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I'm sorry. Spencer Moffett with the Boyer Company.
Thank you. We'll turn it over to Larry then.
So Spencer's covered very well what they're asking to do. The property to the east is not part of any development that's going on right there currently, and the city can't compel someone to move something off site. And Rocky Mountain Power at this point in time is not willing to procure an easement on someone else's property. And so the solution in the code is to allow deferment until either the city or the property of the east is developed, and then, and the applicant will be depositing the full costs of the improvements with the city, and so the money will be there to complete the construction. The planning commission at this point is just making a recommendation the council has to approve this deferment. Do you have any questions for me? Staff recommends approval. I don't see any issues with the code for this, and so.
What's that, Commissioner Jacob has a question?
He does have a question, and it's kind of more of a big picture question. Seventy-eight is being widened piece by piece as the development goes in.
Yes.
This five acre partial that's kind of the island in the, the island in the island?
Yes.
Sorry.
Sounds good.
So that five acre island may or may not ever be developed. Will seventy-eight in front of that may never be developed in that same case?
No, I think it, you want to go ahead, Tyler?
Seventy-eight hundred South, it will be developed, and in fact, probably in the not-too-distant future, the city will be looking to acquire that property and build that fund very soon.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, so I'm kind of the plan for that, that was gonna remain forever in the charge of the family there that owns that, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? This is a business item only, so we just need an agenda. Anybody who wants to throw one out there?
You mean a motion?
An emotion, yes, thank you. All right, Commissioner Jacob?
I will move. Based on the findings set forth in the staff report and the short discussion this evening, I move to report a positive recommendation to the city council to approve the time due construction deferral for 7800 South Street and all required associated utility improvements adjacent to the Loneview North Phase Three development.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jacobs, second by Commissioner Pack. Discussion of the motion, Commissioner Jacob.
Thank you. As I was making that motion, I just realized that this motion, or this, uh, motion, yeah, is a positive recommendation to approve a deferral for all required associated utility improvements on this entire Loneview adjacent property. Not just this 34 feet, this one pole, but this says uniform everything. Now, I know most of it's been done, driving past there a lot.
You can alter your motion to the 34 feet that's in the application, so.
Okay. Do you, do I think we need to? Do you think we need to? It's up to you.
As long as they're holding him bond.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, I don't know what else there is, and it still leaves two more. When I drive past it, I see asphalt curved sidewalk. I don't know what else.
Yeah, I drive past it every day, and honestly, I think as long as it's held in bond, then I think.
Okay, we'll just, I'll leave it, it's fine.
Any further discussion? In favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. The first holder carrying this evening is the Gardner Lane Retail Strip Mall, 1715 West Gardner Lane, a preliminary site plan in an SC1 zone. Fong Nguyen and Lee Chen are the applicants. The applicant present? Time is now yours, sir.
My name is Fred Cox, I'm an architect. Lee Chen is here, who is the applicant. I just want to briefly explain the project and answer any questions that you might have.
Please.
As you see the project exploring on the corner of Gardner Lane and Redwood Road, the house that was there is now gone, and the applicant and the city have worked for a while now to get the right-of-way and, uh, thank you, the right-of-way and the sidewalk and the utilities figured out so this would work. There are some items in the area that if, if you move, it ends up costing enough to buy the whole lot, and so we've worked that out with the city. In fact, the applicant has already graciously donated some right-of-way to the city so that in the future, if Gardner Lane is, is widened and a traffic light goes in, it'll be able to do that. And the proposed site plan shows the sidewalk going in, where it's, where it would be after the road widening, so that the sidewalk won't have to be changed at that point. The curb gutter is going in where the road is currently, and then we're landscaping in between that. But basically, the first question that we had when we first looked at this site was where to put the building? And I sketched something up showing the building close to Redwood Road, but because of the fact that the road was anticipated to be widened on Gardner Lane with a possible intersection there, and also the location of the access to the business across the street, it, it didn't make sense to do that, and so we've located the building on the, on the west side instead of towards the east side, and there are some requirements in the, I think it's 13, 12, 5. There's some, there's some sections in your code that basically say if we, if we follow that, that's certainly an option, and so that's what we've done. In addition to solving the right-of-way and the utilities, we've also worked on concern that was raised having to do with the lighting, and in this case, we've got a small enough parking lot that we're not proposing to light, have any poles, and so we've actually got light poles or lamps on the building, light fixtures on the building that are just over 10 feet tall. And if you look on the south elevation, you can see I've tried to show that the light would be cut off before it would go over the wall, and so we've, we're trying to minimize any light pollution to the, to the neighbors. And then the, the colors, we try to fix it so that the colors are more muted and that they will go in with the other businesses and developments that are new going in that area. But it's, it's a small retail building that could handle up to five retail spaces. There are no interior columns, so theoretically, you know, one tenant could take the whole space, but we anticipate there'll be smaller tenants.
Any questions for the applicant?
What's the, I, I, what's the total square footage of this building? Just so I have an idea?
Um, it's under 5,000.
Oh, I missed it, okay, sorry. I didn't read the first line of the packet.
That's okay.
It is the hardest part. It's the hardest part to get right, never mind.
It's, it's under 4,400 square feet, so, which works out really great because we have 22 parking spaces, so.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. McCallis?
Thank you. The applicant's done a good job of just kind of explaining the project. The only thing we had, needed to add was just the fact that it did go through the design review committee. There was, the applicant's done a good job, we think, of making the fronts. This is going, this is going to be the front that's going to face Redwood Road, and then we've got the north and south elevations here, as you can see, there's been some glass that's been added to that, so as you're driving along Redwood Road, you've got some glass on those sides of the building, so we think he's done a good job at, at making it fit into the, the area and, and work well for the neighborhood. One of the things, this is just a photograph that the applicant had provided showing the colors would be just basically earth tone, would be similar to what is shown on, on this drawing. But with that, our recommendations for approval, we don't see any issues with it. There's a 20-foot landscape buffer on the south side, but also on the west side, and the sites are going to be attractively landscaped, so we just don't see any concerns with it. We recommend approval subject to the provisions in your report.
Any last questions? Commissioner Jacob?
Yes, thank you. And this partially goes along with actually what we got in this email, that you'll get to in a second, but not too long ago, there was a study on Redwood Road. We did a study, right? Redwood Road corridor study as far as use in the future. Redwood Road is a giant macro scale kind of thing. I'm just curious as to how this, if this, does this fit in? Is it part of that? Is it completely unrelated and we have to consider this just by itself? Or is there a, a larger picture that we need to consider?
No, I, that's a good question. I'm just going to answer the, on the Redwood Road study, it has not been adopted, and we're still working on that. Right now, we have a consultant that is on board that's looking at the street, you know, well, street state, and so, it's just street state design, so we'll be plugging that in the plan. There's, there's no, there's no set adopted plan for that.
Right.
That will be headed in your direction shortly.
Right.
Commissioner Hare?
Yes, with the ingress and egress just off of Redwood Road, as the only, as the only ingress and egress, why wasn't there another entrance, say, on Redwood Road? Is that?
Redwood Road is a state road, and so EDA controls the access to that. It's a limited access arterial street, and so they intentionally restrict the number of accesses on, on Redwood Road, just simply because it's so busy and so many cars. And so what they've done intentionally, I think there's like a 300-foot spacing requirement between driveways for, for UDOT, but with this, you've got, it's, it's protected because you have a light. We just thought that it made best sense for that driveway to, to be located there. I think in addition, you know, one of the other things that was brought up was just, it's, it's just to the south, there is an opportunity here, the way they've got this site designed, as if this property to the south develops at some point in the future as, as commercial, there's a possibility of another driveway that connects through here that would connect that development.
If another, if another property to the south were to be developed as commercial, they could go in together, and then that could be an entrance there at that point? Is that what?
That's a possibility, yes.
But at this point, if they were to put a, a driveway there, it would not fall into the 300-foot?
Correct.
Requirement, because there's so many, there are two houses along that already have driveways to the south, so that excludes you from that.
Right.
Is there a safety issue there because of that short, uh, quick right turn, and then you have to make a left turn there? Would it be any diff, I don't know, just thinking out loud, would it be any different than having an access off of Redwood, I suppose? I don't know. Just a thought.
I think the one disadvantage from access under Redwood is you've got cars doing real high speed when it's 45, but then you're closer to 60, and a car pulling out of there doing five.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So at least we have that opportunity to kind of stack up on Gardner Lane and turn from there.
Gardner Lane has light now, right?
I don't know, Redwood down Redwood Road. Commissioner Green?
Uh, my question has to do with the rear of the building. It's clearly, it's clearly got the 20, over 20-foot buffer, 20.7 feet, but it, it seems to me it's all landscaped? Is there a requirement to have a sidewalk or anything back there at all? I noticed that there's at least one door that opens back there. I just wondered, is there a requirement to have a sidewalk or anything back there?
Yes, that's a good catch. One of the things that we would be looking at, let me check the book. I'm just moving the site plan really quickly. I don't see a sidewalk or a walkway. They definitely have, they definitely have to have a landing coming out of that, so that's, that's a good catch. I think we'd, we'd require that as part of a, as part of final approval, so you can make that, or add that into your conditions.
Okay.
That falls under resident, or commercial residential building code, though, so that would be caught anyway. Not inspection.
Administrator.
Commissioner Jacob?
Uh, just one other thing, I was just flipping through this, and I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything. There's no monument sign or any sort of sign exterior of the building, plan?
There are none proposed at this point. I think it kind of will depend on the tenants, and then they'll apply for us, sign in the future.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing that. Thanks.
Commissioner Green?
Then one, one last question for me. I know city code requires the, the 22 parking spots based on the 200, the 200 square feet thing. Is that, given this is going to be retail, probably retail or something like that, is the, is the 22 park, 22 parking spots adequate for both the employees and the customers that are going to be there?
Yes, the parking code requirements factor in employees and customers.
Sorry to you for being a new guy.
It's been a year.
What's that?
It's almost been a year.
It's only been six months.
Oh, well, that's right.
It's only been six months. I haven't figured some of this stuff out yet.
Commissioner Hare?
Thank you. I just had a quick question that Mr. Green brought up as far as the parking goes. What is the calculation again?
It's 22 spaces. Oh, the, it's one per, per right of, I think it was one per?
One for every 200 square feet, isn't it?
200?
That page read, something like that.
Yeah, one per 200 square feet. Yes, it's one, it's in your staff report on page five. It's one stall for 200 square feet, top paragraph.
If I could also add, since we don't have a specific user or tenants lined up at this point, uses could change, but, but parking is reviewed when we review the business license for each new, so that'll be an ongoing thing over the years. We'll just make sure that, that the site is appropriately parked and we keep tabs as, as they redo their business license.
Commissioner Jacob?
While we're on the subject of parking, just because it seems off to me, is, is six feet a standard width parking place? That seems narrow.
It's an R, it's an R.
It's an R, okay, so it looks like a six, I'm like.
Parking spot number seven.
Oh, you know what? I was looking at it upside down.
Turn around.
Six feet seems off.
It's narrow, doesn't it?
Nine feet seems a lot better, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? We will then open this up to the public. If there's anybody who would like to comment on the item, we would bring, invite you up to the microphone there. You would give your name and contact information for the public record, and you would have three minutes to make your comments.
My name's David Stevens. I am adjacent to the west of that property. I'm not too deeply thrilled about that. I was told from the excavators they were going to build a house. I was hoping it would be a house. Exactly, so I'm at 1735, just at the house right there. With that property that they're planning, I'm totally against this retail strip mall, 100 percent. And if I don't have a choice, I hope that they'll be either improving the fence line right there so I don't have to look at that structure, and I don't want to see any light protruding or light pollution onto my property from, but I want ample security where they have lighting on that side, but I don't want to see it on my property, as in shining into my windows, because I have one window that faces that property, and that's a bed. So that is one of my concerns. I'm not too happy about the security. The traffic flow in that area is very, has a lot of traffic. There's always people turning around, but I don't like how it's coming in on the Gardner Lane. I wish it would, if they did, came in on Redwood.
Yeah, it does.
Because there's always cars backed up right, and for them to be pulling in and trying to get in there, that's going to be cluster, big time. Because like I said, I see everything that goes on right there. So if it was my vote, I vote against this property. Any other questions, or?
This is just an opportunity for you to make comment and, and bring any pros and cons you see about the process.
My main concern is I don't like the property. I'm worried about the security and the light pollution coming onto my property, and if they're going to develop that, I want to know what type of fencing is going along on my property, and there's, I hope it's tall enough I don't have to see it.
Thank you.
That's my concern. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this item? We did have one emailed in comment, and I'll, I'll read it so it's a part of the record as well. This is from Mr. Andrew Clegg. Light that developer wants to improve the lot, a little concerned with the proximity of the parking entrance to the intersection of Redwood Road and Gardner Lane. Have they considered putting the building next to Redwood and having parking in the rear, allowing the access to be farther from the intersection? Would like to see developments on Redwood Road more integrated and interconnected with each other rather than isolated, one building developments each with their own roadway access points and design themes. With that, if there's nobody else who'd like to comment, I'll close the public hearing on that, and I would open it up to the applicant if you wanted to come address any of the concerns that were presented during the public comment period.
Thank you. My name is Fred Cox again. I live in West Valley City. The two specific, well, there's three comments. The, the first question is traffic. If we were, if we had designed it so that the building was closer to Redwood Road, the parking lot would be closer to the individual that just spoke to David's house, and that would put the traffic even closer to his house. By putting it the way we've currently designed, the traffic will be on the other side of the building, so that should help some. The other two items that was specifically mentioned were the fences. We talked to staff and we were given two or three options, either like a solid vinyl or a concrete block that would match the building, or a concrete, and those needed to be at least six feet tall. And talk, talking to the applicant, she wanted something that would hold up and wouldn't fall apart. The concern with the vinyl is they can be damaged easier, and so what we've noted on the elevations, and this metal is, is a concrete block wall to match the, the building, and so that will provide some privacy, if you will, and security from the commercial property to the residential property to the west, or the residential use property. I think it's still zoned SC1. And then the, the final item has to do with the lighting. One of the reasons that we want with the lights that are lower on the building, in between 10, 11 feet to the bottom, with the, without using a drop lens, you're less apt to have light pollution, and so it would have a tendency to light inside the property but not outside the property. The, the wall would, would help block that. My wife is into stargazing, and, and I'm very familiar with dark sky light fixtures, and so we would do what we can to minimize the, the line impact to the neighbors.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Any discussion on the planning mission? Commissioner Green?
The, the concrete wall that was just mentioned, I don't see it on any of the plans, so if we?
On the elevation.
Which, which elevate, which page is that? I didn't see it on the page.
Right here. No, the split face concrete block dumpster stream and property wall to match building.
Okay, yeah, because the site plan, the site plan shows chain link fence, and that's, that's, so the elevation shows concrete, but the site plan shows chain link. We, I'm just thinking. Let me just continue for one second. To the neighbors, thank you for showing up. Whatever decision we make tonight, we appreciate your input. There are some things that we are constrained by policy to do, so understand that we are going to consider everything you said, but if it doesn't go in your favor, please understand that there may be some reasons why, and if you have questions, we can talk about it later as well, if that, if it doesn't go that way, so. I, I, I'm, I'm just going to keep going for a second. I also have a problem with, a little bit with where the driveway goes. It is really close to the corner. I don't know if there's a way to better mitigate that. I mean, I see the concern from what the, we got in the email and everything, is that that just seems really, really close to the corner, but I don't know if there's anything we can do, do about that, given the, the way this works. Just my thought.
Commissioner Skoski?
Um, thank you. So I just kind of laid my paper across. If you look at the, the entrance there, there's a distance marking of 32.4 feet, and if you lay that across from the, the outside curb wall of Redwood Road to the, the corner shoulder of the entrance into the parking lot, you get over 60 feet. And I think, I think that's, that's tight, but it's at least two and a half car lengths. And my opinion is given, I mean, we obviously can't put it on Redwood Road, but even if we could put it on Redwood Road, traffic flow is going to be a lot better where the infill, or egress is located now than having it in another place. And I feel like where the building is located also addresses the concern of the west, the western property owner, so I tend to lean in favor of leaving it where it is.
Commissioner Hare?
Jacob? Jacob, that's only one of the. My question was, I, question for staff about that driveway is whether or not there was a code that specified how far away from the corner it has to be, but the more I think about it, the more, I don't need to ask that because I just drove out of a gas station that was on a corner, it was really close to the corner. So the more I think about it, that doesn't bother me so much, but to Commissioner Green's comment, I do believe that we should add the type of fence as a condition of approval, just because I've seen other plans where it's been mentioned, but if it's not written in there, then they don't have to do it, and other stuff goes in, so. Yeah, that's, that's all I have right now.
Commissioner Hare?
Thank you. My question or concern, I guess, would be along with the homeowner to the west, we have the, the lighting in the back, and, and it's supposed to shine down onto the, the ground and the dirt there, but is, is that going to be, is there going to be, is there going to be a lot more light going over that fence than?
I don't think there's lighting in the back.
There is.
Yeah, there's lighting in the back.
There's five, there's four or five.
You have to have something back there for safety purposes, probably, security. You have to have something back there for safety purposes, probably, security. I'm wondering for the neighbor's sake, if, if that could be like a motion detector type lighting, if that would be anything that would help alleviate the light pollution for the neighbor. That's even a consideration, is a thought I had.
Commissioner Skoski?
Thank you. I'm very familiar with the type of lighting as well. And if they use the style of lamp that's shown on the elevations, then you really won't have much upward splash light. The light bulb sits all the way inside and the shade itself goes below where the light bulb fixture is. So the light really shines downward. They, I use the same style lighting up in Promontory Point and they have very strict city dark restrictions up there. So you really get a lot off the ground, a lot of lighting on the ground, but you don't get horizontal or vertical light pollution. As long as they use what's shown in the, in the drawing.
Commissioner Green?
And maybe, maybe staff can help me with this particular question as well. How, because I don't look at a lot of strip malls, I just know the ones that I, I've had my businesses, the two that I've had my businesses in. How, how routine is it to have this kind of a building without very many entrances going to the back? And have, is that a common thing to have that, that dead space in the back like that without, without anybody going in and out of the, you know what I'm, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. The twenty foot, twenty feet is a code requirement, so.
Well, I know that twenty feet is a code requirement. What I'm wondering is like if, if you go over to the, the strip mall that my store used to be in, the, the, that town center over at Seventieth and Redwood, you have, you have entrance, you have a parking lot in the back, you have entrances going in and out, which helps with the security of the area. What I'm wondering is, is this a typical design that, or, or is it more typical design that has stuff in the back that the store owner has to probably maintain better? I'm rambling and it doesn't make sense. But this, do you see where I'm going with that? This, this just looks like to me, it's a, it's a, it's a brick building. I know the one design shows one door. It's a brick building and it'll have a sidewalk, but that seems to, without having entrances and those kinds of things to the back, it just seems like that may be harder to secure for, for people that want to go back and do stuff. I'm just talking out loud. I just wonder if this is a typical design or what do we have in West Jordan?
I've seen it both ways. I mean, usually when you have those, those, the doors out to the back, it's usually for loading or unloading and there's a lot of activity that's back there. And kind of, quite frankly, odd hours. And so I think having fewer doors on that west side and less activity is actually better for the adjoining property owners than just, just a single door would have.
Well, I argue that would increase security because now you've got an area with no activity in it with a, a potential access point to a business that could be closed.
I'm just wondering if that just dead grass area, that dead landscape area is just going to, could attract something to deal with this, you know, the security. I, I don't know the answer to that. That's why I'm just asking if that, if that does anything to the security or if there, you know, is there something that can be done to, to help with that? Just because it is a dead area. I don't know the answer to that, I'm just asking.
Commissioner Skoski?
In regards to that, I think it's kind of a moot point. I mean, the business owner, it's in their best interest to make sure that the property is secure. And so if, if things are going on back there, then, then they'll do things to mitigate for that because that's, you know, negative to their own business. So I don't know. I, I kind of tend to lean my staff on that, the quieter that is, the, the, um, better the welfare for the property owner to the west.
Commissioner Higgins?
Just one other question for staff. Looking at the zoning and the future land use map, just for my own clarification, considering the neighbors. The property to the west, is, is it divided in two as far as the zone and the future land use map goes? Am I looking at that right or is it squeezed onto that narrow little strip?
Oh, yes, you are looking at it correctly. This is the future land use map. You see that the property in the west is...
Half commercial and half residential.
Residential. And then here's the zoning map, it's half commercial, half residential. I think what, what had happened is when that property was zoned, they came up with a, a number of feet.
Right.
Off of the Redwood Road right of way and they just kind of drew the line. So it, it didn't follow, obviously didn't follow all of the others.
We just recently did that with another property with, where we zoned the front of it, commercial in the back of it, residential, like the properties to the south are here. I just want to make sure that we're not right. It drives me crazy.
Any further comments, questions, concerns? I'd be in favor of motion if somebody wants to make one. Public comment period is closed at this point? Or all the way, nope, Commissioner Skoski?
Based on the findings of staff report and information received during this meeting, I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary site plan with proposed commercial building located at seventeen fifteen West Gardner Lane in an SC one neighborhood commercial zoning district, subject to the conditions set forth in the staff report and including a condition that the, uh, the wall at the rear of the project be the split face concrete that is described on the south elevation on page four, can of the staff report.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Skoski, second by Commissioner Law, is discussion to the motion. Commissioner Green?
So I'm, I'm just going to, to, to help address some of the neighbors' concerns. Unfortunately, this property is zoned SC one. And this property, this, this proposed plan is consistent with the SC one. I know that we don't like commercial or retail outlets in our backyard, but, and we're trying to, we're trying to mitigate that as best we can. But given the zoning and, and everything else, it will be difficult for me to vote against that. So that, I just wanted to put that on the record.
No other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries six to one with Commissioner Heinrich casting a dissenting vote. Next item on our agenda is Dollar Tree located at sixty-two seventy-one South Dixie Drive, reviewing a preliminary site plan in a CG zone. DS Dixie Valley, Peter Dreyfus is the applicant, is the applicant present? Please, sir. If you'd kindly give a sharing?
I would. My name is Richard Pigott. I'm with Galloway and Company, we're a local engineering firm here based in Salt Lake City, Utah. And we've been retained by Peter Dreyfus or Dixie Valley Shopping Center to help with the entitlement process for this project. Basically, it's ninety-two hundred square foot core and shell building. The tenants will come in to finish it, which will be a Dollar Tree. It'll be coming at a later date. We've also provided for additional retail stores to come in the future. We are still going to develop the site as it was anticipating those as coming already in. So we'll have pads available to them and parking available to them and utility stuff to those pads so they can be developed for the later date. Parking is within requirements for West Jordan City. We're meeting the landscaping requirements as requested by staff. We read through the staff report that was provided by Larry Gardner. We agree with all the findings that they have in there and just without, any questions or comments you guys have for me or for anybody that has a public comment as well?
Any questions for the applicant? It doesn't look like we have any at this point, thank you. Mr. Gardner?
All right, the Orient, everyone. Dixie Shopping Center is located on the corner of sixty-two hundred south, Bangor Highway and Dixie Drive. There's a seven-eleven on sixty-two hundred south. The reams is off of sixty-two and Dixie Drive. Dixie Valley residential area would be to the south. And there is already many stores in the Dixie Valley Shopping Center. This will just add to that retail mix. The property is zoned commercial general, it's, it's commercial on the future land use map. The site plan, this site plan is, has been updated, what I should say. Today, the entire frontage along Dixie Drive will, with the exception of the curb cuts, will have curb gutter and sidewalk installed out to sixty-two hundred. So there'll no longer be an ingress point right here. And maybe I can go back. Right now, people accessing the seven-eleven just freely come across this point. Seven-eleven does have an access off of sixty-two hundred south. And the applicant, when they develop this, are willing to let seven-eleven come and make this motion. Their intent is in the future is to develop this, this tiny corner with some use that will go there. And so seven-elevens, they won't lose any access. It'll just be moved to a safer location, so it's not right there. Right now, it's just all approach on that corner and that, that causes some, you know, some of the public safety people to be a little bit nervous at this point. As Mr. Pigott said, they'll just be developing this one building. At this time, this will remain vacant. It does meet, as he said, the parking, landscaping, and general site plan requirements of the code. This is a rough landscape plan. The building was approved by the Development Review Committee. It's a basically a block structure with different color patterns. You know, it's, it's a typical retail building, but the DRC did feel it meet the requirements of the, the code. And with that, it meets all the requirements of the code as stipulated in the staff report. Staff does recommend approval of this site plan.
I have one question. I remember reading in the last six months that pretty quick they're going to start doing some interchange work to multiple intersections of Bangor. I think sixty-two hundred was, was one of those as well. Will any of that, I imagine they're doing what they, what they did at seventy-hundred, will that impact any of that corner?
We haven't heard anything and generally I believe that UDOT will be conducting all of that within their right of way. The one issue is that you do have a bridge right here. I think it'd be rather costly for them to, and there is, you can see quite, I think they have put that alternate turn in there at the location. Do you want to answer that, Rich, do you know?
Again, I'm picking with Galloway. Just to let you know, one of the requirements, staff required us to do was do a traffic study. We had Joe Perrin with A-Trans. We had, we had conversations briefly with UDOT because that was a question that we had as well. It also came up during one of the reviews we had with the city. What is not seen here in this picture is Jordan Valley Aqueduct is along the west side or the east side of the property. For them to do anything past that, they'd have to relocate the Jordan Aqueduct, which is very unlikely. Conversation with Joe Perrin with A-Trans is this particular intersection hasn't been designed yet or anticipated for design, it's very far down UDOT's schedule. Now they're more worried with the intersections further to the south. But most likely, if ever, anything ever happens in this intersection, it's going to have to happen on the east side because of the aqueduct.
Thank you. Commissioner Green?
So as we look at this piece of problem, can you go back to that, that one? Not either one of these. So we've got the goofy little corner on the northwest. That, that, that sounds like what you said, there's going to be potential future development. What are we doing with the weird jet out on to get that one?
He's going to landscape that.
Just going to be landscaped?
Yeah.
Okay.
Surely nothing, it's kind of a no man's land.
Well, that's, that's why I asked, because it just seemed like it's out there and it's like, what are we going to do with it?
And then there is a sign structure right here if you're, but the rest of this will just be, have a landscape treatment put on it, so.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll open this to the public. If there's anybody who would like to comment on this particular item. Seeing none, we'll close public hearing and bring it back to Commissioner.
I was just going to ask.
Oh, thank you.
You had the, you had the email with a comment that you might read in before.
Thank you, yes. Let me read that into the minutes as well, again from, from Andrew Clegg. I think this will bring some new life to the shopping center. Concerned if there is enough space between the rear of the building and Bangor Highway for UDOT to build a freeway home ramp in the future as they work on converting Bangor into a freeway. Just don't want to see a nice new building built and then in five years have it torn down. May not be an issue, just want the question out there. If we've addressed that. Thank you for that.
Amen.
No comments, now Commissioner Skoski?
Based on the findings set forth in the staff report and information received during this commission meeting, I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary site plan for Dollar Trees located at sixty-two seventy-one South Dixie Drive in the commercial general zoning district with conditions set forth in the staff report.
Second. Third.
First by Commissioner Skoski, second by, I think it was Commissioner Green. Any discussion in the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Last item on our agenda this evening is Copper Valley State's West Rezone and Land Use Amendment. Fifty-nine fifty west, E five oh two south, considering a general plan land use amendment, fifteen point three acres from low density residential to medium density residential and rezoning from LSFR to R one ten E. Marilyn Bodden is the applicant, is the applicant present? The title is now yours, or his.
Theirs. Yells.
My wife has informed me that I have to do this. Anyway, you have, do you have something I can point with?
You can give us your name as well, sir.
My, my name is Dean Bodden. I'm the husband of the applicant, okay. I guess north is vertical, right? So I can describe it that way. To the north is a R one ten. To the west is an R one ten plus the site. Let's see, how do I turn this thing around? Have to be smarter than the devising. Pardon? Right there, I got it, I got it, okay. That's a church site, but this is R one ten and this is R one eight. And we have the Mountain View Corridor here. And this is, of course, is a city park. And so we're just asking for conformity of this to whatever's adjacent to it.
Short sweep, any questions for the applicant? It doesn't look like it at this time, thank you. Mr. Gardner again?
So this property across on the west side is Copper Valley State. Perry Homes is developing, now the planning commission saw that a few months ago. This is zone R one eight, then Mountain View Corridor runs this way. The power corridor is, Rockymount Power Corridor is a very large corridor to the east of this property. And as Dr. Bodden said, all of the properties around it are in R one ten in our zoning district. As you can see right now, it's, it's on the land use map, a low density residential. It's the only low density in the area and they're asking to change it to immediate density residential and to rezone it from LSFR, which is a west side planning area zone that right now is only applied in the Highlands development. This is well outside the boundaries of the Highlands to an R one ten with an E size home. And, and so the R one ten will, R one ten E will exactly match what's to the west and to the north with the exception that the house sizes will be much larger, will be required. Staff has gone through both of the findings, the general plan and for the zoning map amendment, and have found that this application does meet all those and recommends that the planning commission recommend approval to the city council for the land use map and zone change at this time.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Green?
So right now, we're only looking at the future land use map and the zoning.
Yes, sir.
We'll come back if we're talking about design or the, the subdivision.
We'll come back if we're talking about design or the, the subdivision plot subs later.
The preliminary subdivision will come back at a, a future date, so we'll talk about road access, water and sewer, all that fun stuff.
All right, that's, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, the property to the north is R one ten C.
Yes, sir.
Pardon me?
Yes.
The, how, the house sizes in the, in the C zone are a minimum of eleven hundred, is that?
Uh, you heard that on your...
Thousand, eleven hundred.
I don't have that memory, it's a bit, too much.
The D, the D was twelve hundred if I remember right, but, uh, my question, I guess, is i- if that, you've got ten thousand square foot.
That's twenty-four hundred.
Twenty...
Four hundred square feet right here. Minimum of fifty-one hundred.
So you're twelve hundred square foot on Ramblor basically, is that what I'm...
Uh, C size home or is...
C is twenty-four.
That includes the basement as well.
Including the basement, okay.
Including the basement.
So your twelve hundred square feet, the E, uh, requires...
Fifteen.
Three thousand, fifteen hundred. Driving through that subdivision, there are several different styles and, and different homes in there that, in some cases, the, the house almost fills the whole lot up and so I guess my, the question is, if, if with the, with the ten E, the, in my mind, it does, it, if you went to a higher density, you're crowding a whole bunch of houses in. Here, you're, you're, it's kind of the same thing in that the houses are bigger, uh, and may, uh, maybe I'm just...
Well, the, the houses will fit within the setback and that's the reason we have setbacks in the ordinance. Uh, no house, you know, you can't build a house that, um, takes up more than fifty percent of the lot, and so you could build up to a five thousand square foot home on there if you want, was, if you could make it fit in the setbacks, but, you know, the, the city's protected by the ordinance, you know, if someone can build up to the setback, then the more power to them, that meets code, so. But I wouldn't ever in my wildest dreams consider a thirty-five hundred square foot house as high density, because that's pretty, you know, there's, you're looking at three per acre maybe here at the most, and so it's...
Just an abstract thought, I guess I am. Thank you.
Uh, I just have one question while we're on this map. Um, I know the roundabout here has been put in on this, on the southwest, I was gonna say lower left, southwest corner of this, of this property, has that road to the north been put in to connect up to the brush fork? From here to the, it's shown as a trail here, this picture's a little old.
Uh, no, it has not, there's one property in between, which is the Elder's Church, uh, they have recorded the subdivision plot, um, and given two years to construct improvements, it's been a, approximately one year, so they have one year to construct.
Okay. Nice up by the other roundabout to the north there.
Yeah, it's in that big block right there.
So in one year.
Okay, so that's one, that's one out of the... Cool, that was just for my own morbid curiosity. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, uh, we'll open up this portion of the meeting to the public if there's anybody who would like to comment on this particular item. Seeing none, we'll, uh, we have one more comment from, uh, Andrew Clay. Uh, thumbs up for not moving smaller, everything in immediate proximity is R one ten, existing Copper Valley Estates to the east is on the other side of the power corridor and Mountain View, so not really in proximity. People have been building four thousand plus square foot homes in Three Forks and even the R one ten lots sometimes feel small and the houses are pushing the side rear or setbacks would like it, they would consider even larger lots on R one ten, even if the zoning state is R one ten, but lots were in the twelve thousand square foot size. Will this address the current two hundred foot gap in six thousand, six thousand west and will it be constructed in a segment of eighty-six hundred south along the property? Uh, with that, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission, Commissioner Koski.
Thank you, um, something that I really like about, about what West Jordan's done, particularly in this area, is made, uh, an environment for homes that are a nice size on a modest lot, uh, and the reason that I like that is because, um, you know, when my kids get older, I want them to be able to stay in the area, you know, I, I love that, that the homes, the size of the homes that we're building are, are priced, you know, price point modestly enough compared with the rest of the valley that, that, you know, your kid could grow up and, and stay in the area and, uh, you know, I really like that this is consistent, their design is consistent with what's immediately to the west and, you know, a little nicer than what's to the north, I think it's a great compromise. Um, I, I feel like we've, we've hit a point where everybody's demanding low density lots, but, but the reality is that not a lot of people can afford those lots and as resources or water resources are already taxed, um, I feel like, you know, building large, you know, low density lots isn't really consistent with a sustainable approach to the city, it's just my opinion, so I like this.
Mr. Green?
So, I do have a question now that, is eighty-six hundred south, I mean, it dies right there to the, to the west, right? Is eighty, is eighty-six hundred south intended to continue on up to this property or?
And over the, and over the freeway.
Eventually go up over the, the freeway.
Okay.
When, when UDOT decides they want to spend a lot of money.
Are, is, is the property owner gonna be, at, at some point in time, gonna be required to, to help do eighty-six hundred south there along their south frontage?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll have to see how that lines, and that, that's again, that's, that's a subdivision process, we'll have to see how it lines up with the road...
Right.
Uh, to the east.
I think I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Koski, I think, I mean, a ten thousand square foot lot's just slightly under a quarter of an acre, isn't it?
It's about, was it about thirty-one?
Point two-three, something like that. I, I think you're right, I, I think that the R one ten there is a good compromise because it allows people to buy affordable, you know, an affordable lot, that you can put a decent sized house on. I, I mean, we, we, I know in some of my discussions with people, you know, if you want to buy a cheap house, you go to, you know, you go to Eagle Mountain to do it and you end up driving a hundred miles to get anywhere, so I like the idea of having a, a, an affordable lot with a decent house because it makes, it makes the house affordable in the valley as opposed to, you know, like what you said, for your kids or for some of us, it makes it, it makes it a more affordable neighborhood than a, but it's still a nice neighborhood, you know, it's not the, it's not the half acre that, you know, and you have to build a, you know, super big house on it and it makes an affordable house, so I, I, I agree with you, I think this is a, a good fit for the, the neighborhood.
Mr. Dick.
If there's no other discussion, I'd go ahead and make the motion. Please do. Uh, so, motion number one, based on the findings in the staff report and the discussion this evening, I move to forward a positive recommendation to the city council to amend the future land use map from low density residential to medium density residential for the fifteen point three acres of property located at fifty-nine fifty-one west eighty-five oh two south.
Motion by Commissioner Jacobs, second by Commissioner Quinney, any discussion to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
I'll make the second one as well. "Based on the findings in the report and the evidence and the explanation received this evening, I move to forward a positive recommendation to the city council to rezone fifteen point three acres of property generally located at fifty-nine fifty-one west eighty-five oh two south from LSFR to R one ten E zone."
Second. Motion by Commissioner Jacobs, second by Commissioner Quinney, discussion to that one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. That concludes our agenda for this evening, unless there's something else we need to discuss?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, anybody opposed to that? We stand adjourned until December fifteenth.